I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call.
McKnight.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here. Fledged agents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, public comment on agenda items?
None.
Uh, notice of executive session meetings?
None.
Approval of minutes, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Managers report?
Um, just there is one communication to note in your packets from the Crawford County Planning Office. It is just an FYI that it was received. Any questions, please direct those at Peter. Uh, to a couple items, uh, so the first is six ninety-nine Pine Street. This is just an update. As everybody remembers, the house was, um, pretty demolished by fire. Long process to get it demolished, but it has been demolished and backfilled per city code. As far as the city is concerned, it is, uh, under the control of the estate at this point to sell or rebuild, anything of that nature.
Have we heard from the community members?
We have, they seem pleased, um, that it's finally down. Um, so that's, that's what we have, it's an update.
Was, sorry, was it the, um, cause it was the bank that held it for a while? Did, did they do the demo?
It was, ended up being transferred back into the estate of the woman who had, uh, unfortunately passed. So the estate then handles all of the expenses, any debts and mortgages and demolitions that need to happen, the estate would clear that.
Now, do we have funds escrowed?
There were escrow funds, yes.
Okay, and that'll be dispersed accordingly.
Correct, yes.
Did the public nu- so we adopted the, or we adopted a public nuisance ordinance because of, not because of, but?
Speed up the process.
Speed up the process, did it, did that ordinance?
Um, I don't think it had an ultimate effect on what the process was. It just takes a long time when this happens and wills need to be cleared or established. It just takes some time, unfortunately. There's a legal process that you have to follow through. It transferred back into the creation of an estate to clear assets. That's what happened here. There was a little bit of delay in the demolition. We were told a couple of different dates. I think some weather played into part as well as scheduling of the demolition company and what they had going on.
Just as information, the city of Titusville is adopting an ordinance relating to, a fee charged to lenders who repossess homes for vacant homes.
A for- a foreclosure, right?
Foreclosed properties, yes.
Foreclosed properties, as a kind of a vacation.
We did evaluate that when Gary Johnson was still here. Uh, we went through the process and believe that some discussions were had with, they were, they're using a third party to do that.
Right.
There were discussions with third parties. The value at that time that would be brought in versus time, efforts, things of that nature, didn't seem worth it.
Yeah, I think the, uh, third party is gonna get about forty percent. The city needs about sixty, yeah.
Um, when, when you talk about that, uh, Jim, that's a vacant home fee, is that what you're, you're, is that what that is? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my mind around it.
I don't have all the details, but, uh, for homes that have been repossessed and are vacant, it'd be a, a fund or a, a fee levied on the, uh, I suppose, lien holder.
Okay.
To spur a, a, extra lending reaction.
Like a movement, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there are different ways that communities are doing those vacant home fees and sometimes it can be vacant across the whole community. And I think Titusville's approach was, was, um, specific to properties like Jim's saying that were proposed upon. Um, probably mainly because there's like a register, like there, there, that's an easier list to get than like to go out and like find which homes are vacant. Um, and then, and that list is also gotten by that third party, Hyra, Hyra, something like that? They came and did like a presentation at Titusville Council, go please.
Um, I just have one last question, kind of off, off that topic, but, um, we did the nuisance ordinance and, um, if you're, you're thinking it didn't have much of an effect on this property, but it will speed up the process if, if the same thing happens again, right?
Uh, right, absolutely.
Or kind of, or give us.
If we would have had that ordinance in effect at the onset of this issue, it would have come into play at, at the point that we were at with six ninety-nine Pine. The, the estate was too far down the line in their process and we weren't quite there yet. But for any future cases like this, it would be helpful.
Jim, are you thinking, are you, is this like just a curiosity? Are you thinking that we should be looking?
Uh, more curiosity, I just noticed the article in a paper and thought I'd bring it up. Uh, it's probably just a different way of approaching it compared to what we have done. And I think ours is as effective, if not more effective.
Our, no, I was gonna ask that, but I, our what? Like when you say our way of doing it?
Our, our way of doing it now with the nuisance ordinance and everything else. Instead of assessing a fee, if you have the nuisance ordinance and, and I think that has finding capabilities included in it, we'd have the same result instead of going through the process that Titusville did. Hopefully, we don't have another property like F, but we'll see how the nuisance ordinance does work.
It's true, I'm, I'm glad we have the nuisance ordinance on the books. It is like, it has to become a nuisance before that is triggered, right? And so I wonder if the, um, is something like what Titusville has is, is a little more proactive in that before it becomes a nuisance?
It's nuisance, right, yeah.
It's, you know, it's at least on our, our radar and encouraged to, to get back, you know, to be habitable and, you know, rent it out or, you know.
I, I can pull up my notes from that. I do think from your, um, comments, yeah, a lot of it has to do with difficulty finding and holding the current owner of record accountable. Because you can send all the notices, but if the current owner of record isn't here or if they're difficult to find, then there's not too much.
They're a holding company owned by a bank or body of like, you know?
Exactly, yeah. But I'll find my notes.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Uh, two new officers started yesterday. Um, they took the place of some retirements in the police department. Um, they're currently in cou- first couple of days of training. So they haven't done too much aside from city dispatch.
And we'll meet them at some.
You will meet them at some.
Is there somebody downstairs that is singing?
Um, I think there's a visitor.
Someone in the end. I'm just, I, I keep hearing it and I'm, I'm like, you wondered if somebody's outside, if somebody's in distress or if we've got somebody downstairs. So I, I apologize because it's like, it's pretty consistent. I don't know what song it is, but I'll probably be singing it the rest of the evening. It does, it does, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be singing it, it's very catchy. We, we swear those officers in.
Right, definitely.
Yeah. I have names, so.
Two more items, sorry. Uh, we do have the refuse contract. We'll be going out to bid in the next couple of weeks. We've been working on getting that together. And the last item is that tax bills have been mailed out.
Um, rural business?
None.
Um, all right, new business. Uh, resolution authorized signatures Crawford County twenty twenty-five hazard mitigation plan. Can I have a motion?
Motion. On second.
Discussion?
This is a relatively routine plan that we are asked to sign onto from the county. Allows us to become eligible for some FEMA grant funding, compliance with state federal, state and federal regulations, various risk reduction and resilience factors, improvements to disaster recovery, um, and community infrastructure protection. So this is more of a proactive hazard mitigation plan. Checks city, the residents. So asking for council's approval to sign on.
Do you have any questions?
There was not any fee imposed on us.
That's fair.
What's the, can you say more about like what it looks like for us to participate in this? Like, do we have someone designated at the city to be a point person with the?
Me.
Oh, great.
I'm the emergency management coordinator. Evan is also certified in emergency management. Um, so if there was a, the Lord Fire, for example, right? If that were to happen in the city, Evan would be site control if he would, to need anything from the county. So has mad additional conversations with FEMA. We could ask the county to help coordinate and facilitate that. Anything that we can't provide at the city, we can ask the county.
If we didn't adopt this, we just wouldn't be able to ask that of the county?
Yeah, they probably more, they probably still help, but a little more reluctant.
Um, and in this, would this, does this open us up to like audits and, and different things? Or is this just a, a deal between us that we can?
It's, it's just a deal, any auditing we get from the grants, we would have, we'd incur that anyway.
Okay, that sounds good. Does anybody have any other questions? Roll call.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on the twenty twenty-five Crawford County Hazard Medigation Plan. McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Resolution recognizing Pat Wiley upon retirement, can I have a motion?
Motion.
One second. Discussion? Do we read it? I'm gonna, I'm sorry. No, I just, I was just waiting for, I'm, I'm taking them off so I can see the print here. Um, a resolution of the city, uh, of the council of the city of Meadville recognizing the exemplary service and dedication of Chief Patrick Wiley upon his retirement from the Meadville Fire Department, resolved by the, the council of the city of Meadville. That whereas Fire Chief Patrick Wiley was dedicated twenty-two years of honorable service, uh, to the Meadville Fire Department, beginning his distinguished career on September third, twenty twenty-two. And whereas from his first day on duty to his final call, Chief Wiley has embodied the values of courage, integrity, and selflessness, always putting the safety and well-being of the Meadville community first. And whereas his leadership has not only strengthened the department, but has also fostered a culture of excellence, mentorship, and camaraderie, ensuring that generations of firefighters have been guided by his knowledge, experience, and unwavering commitment. And whereas Chief Wiley has stood on the front lines of emergencies, responding with skill and determination, um, earning the admiration of his colleagues and the gratitude of the community he has so faithfully served. And whereas beyond his role as a firefighter and leader, he has been a mentor, a trusted friend, and an invaluable presence in the department, leaving behind a legacy of dedication and service that will be felt for years to come. And whereas his well-earned retirement on July fifth, twenty twenty-four marks the conclusion of a remarkable career and the beginning of a new chapter, one that has more than earned, that was more than earned through his tireless service and countless sacrifices. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that the city of Meadville proudly honors and extends its deepest gratitude to Fire Chief Patrick Wiley for his twenty-two years of outstanding service, leadership, and unwavering dedication to the protection of our community and recognizes the profound and lasting impact he has had on the Meadville Fire Department and the entire community, ensuring a safer and stronger city through his steadfast commitment. See, resolution recognizing Jim Aldridge upon retirement, can I have a motion?
Second.
Go ahead, sorry, do we vote on the last one? Sorry, uh, no, you know what? I read it and then thought, did we vote on this already?
We discussed it and then read it.
Okay, so let's, uh, vote on Patrick Wiley?
Okay, McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. That's okay, no, thank you. Uh, resolution recognizing Jim Aldridge upon retirement.
On move. Second.
Discussion? Um, a resolution of the, as council of the city of Meadville recognizing the exemplary service and dedication of Lieutenant James Aldridge upon his retirement from the Meadville Fire Department, resolved by the, the council of the city of Meadville. That whereas Lieutenant James Aldridge, uh, has dedicated twenty-one years of honorable service to the Meadville Fire Department, beginning his distinguished career on April fourteenth, two thousand three. And whereas throughout his tenure, Lieutenant Aldridge has been a steadfast leader, a trusted mentor, and a courageous first responder, always answering the call of duty with integrity, professionalism, and an unwavering commitment to the safety of the, of the Meadville community. And whereas his years of service have been marked by countless acts of bravery, sacrifice, and compassion, leaving a lasting impact not only on the department, but the many lives he has touched. And whereas beyond his firefighting expertise, Lieutenant Aldridge has been a guiding force within the department, sharing his knowledge, experience, and unwavering dedication with his college, colleagues shaping the next generation of Meadville firefighters. And whereas as he embarks on a well-earned retirement on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the city of Meadville recognizes his remarkable contributions, the friendships he has built, and the legacy of service he leaves behind. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that the city of Meadville proudly honors and expresses its deepest gratitude to Lieutenant James Aldridge for his extraordinary dedication, service, and leadership over the past twenty-one years, and recognizes the profound impact he has had on the Meadville Fire Department and the entire community, ensuring a safer and stronger city through his unwavering commitment. Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Um, resolution recognizing Ryan Carlson upon retirement.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? All right, third one. Um, a resolution of the council of the city of Meadville recognizing the exemplary service and dedication of Captain Ryan Carlson upon his retirement from the Meadville Fire Department, resolved by the council of the city of Meadville. That whereas Ryan, uh, Captain Ryan Carlson has dedicated twenty years of loyal and courageous service to the Meadville Fire Department, beginning his career on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas throughout his distinguished career, Captain Carlson has been a pillar of strength, demonstrating not only exceptional skill and professionalism, but also an unwavering commitment to protecting the people of Meadville. And whereas his leadership on the, uh, fire ground, on the fire ground and his mentorship within the, the department have shaped the career of countless firefighters, earning him the respect and admiration of both his colleagues and the community as he served so faithfully. And whereas Captain Carlson has consistently led by example, facing every challenge with determination and every call with bravery, embodying the true spirit of service and selflessness. And whereas his retirement on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four marks the conclusion of a remarkable career. A career defined by dedication, integrity, and steadfast commitment to safety and well-being of the Meadville community. And where, whereas while Captain Carlson steps away from active duty, his impact on the department and the lives of, and the lives he has touched will be felt for years to come. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Meadville that the city of Meadville proudly recognizes and honors Captain Ryan Carlson for his dedicate, uh, for his decades of outstanding service, steadfast leadership, and deep commitment to public safety, and expresses its heartfelt gratitude to Captain Carlson for his invaluable contributions, which have strengthened the Meadville Fire Department and ensured a safer community for all. Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Um, okay, resolution. Authorized submission rural business development grant.
Motion. Second.
Discussion?
This grant is for the creation of an interior master plan for the market house. This will include market research for what things the market house could sell, vend, uh, and otherwise bring into the, the market house. It will also give drawings for the implementation of any of those plans that come from the market research. And then just an overall remaining useful life of items. So we're looking at lighting, floors, those types of things. Give a, a better perspective. Total cost is a little over eighty-five thousand for that. There's no match requirement from the city for submission of this.
Did we apply for, um, like hard costs at all with this? Or is it, it's just planning?
This is just planning. Any implementation would have to be a later.
We have sources of funds for like capital, like just the building needs some stuff.
Well, now the building roof is our main priority.
Right, and we, we.
And this will help decide what come, what can we do.
What after, what's next?
Yeah.
But the funding for the roof, we've got a plan.
There is a plan. We submitted an application to D C E D. Um, they should be making that announcement sometime this month. I'm not going to jinx it by saying what I've heard, so hopefully this month we'll, I'll have some good news.
Great, okay.
I remember that, thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Um. Do you think rural development funds will be available and untouched?
Yeah, I don't know, unfortunately. I haven't heard that they aren't.
No, they're fine. I'm here too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Fair hoping, so that'd be great.
Uh, roll call.
We've read the resolution.
Oh, did we?
I got it. A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing submission of the rural business development grant to the United States Department of Agriculture in the amount of eighty-five thousand thirty dollars. McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Resolution authorized signature city procurement policy.
Motion. Second.
As we are receiving more and more grants, particularly on the federal level, this has come up over and over again that we need a city procurement policy. We are already governed by procurement via third class city code and any federal guidelines revolving around procurement. What we've found is that many of these agencies just want to see it all laid out in one document that has been formally adopted by council. So that is what you have in front of you here. Um, it has been vetted by NOCS, so, and I've made any changes suggested by them.
Was the vetting after the version was posted on?
Yes.
Council packet, okay. So, uh, I was very glad to see the local vendor preference there. And I see that there was like a change.
We have no authority to do that, according to the auditor.
For, okay, so for small purchases and intermediate purchases, can, can we state that, right, like we've got discretion there and we will, when feasible, opt for local vendors? Like we will purchase locally?
I think that's fine, and I also think it can be used when we score things that we receive in bids and things like that. There can be some sort of preferential points that can be part of the evaluation process as a whole. Um, I think that is allowable.
Is that, or are you able to add that in writing so that it's, you know, kind of?
Let me tell you a, a story on that very subject. Number of years ago, we were bidding, uh, radio contract awards for the police department. The bid was twelve hundred dollars. A local bidder had a bid eleven dollars higher and we couldn't take it. Even though that local firm paid far more and for cabinet tax and everything else, and occupational privilege tax, we weren't allowed to.
And presumably employed local people, you know, like, right? Like for so many reasons, you want to be able to direct the money here, yeah.
Yeah.
No, and this also tightens up, uh, one of the recommendations of our auditor, I believe, on, uh, on procurements. And Mary Ann, I'm sure you know the answer to this. What about Co-Stars?
Co-Stars is exempt from this. They've already, that's done through the state. And so it's already an allowable purchasing option that doesn't need to go through any of these thresholds.
It's like our, our police vehicles and stuff.
Does anybody have any other questions on this?
So what's in front of us now is a resolution to adopt.
And you can.
Can we see a draft with those changes?
Do we need to change it?
Articulate with the changes so that we know what you mean? What is it? What do we say?
So it would be a motion to approve with changes of, when applicable, attempt to award to local vendors if possible. And I will need to talk to Tim Walker about if, if that is part of the evaluation criteria because there is nothing in third class city code that unilaterally just gives these preference points to local vendors. So the council doesn't have the authority to say you have ten extra points because you're a local vendor. But again, as part of the evaluation criteria, usually with, when you are evaluating bids, you say, you know, price, experience, but you can also work points to being a local vendor as part of that.
So does Larry have to amend his motion?
Yeah.
So I'll amend the motion, the motion to, uh, where we will add, or see if we're allowed to add, uh, points to, uh, local vendors.
I'll amend my second.
I'm so sorry. Um, the, the point system comes into play when it's about for bid, when it's a bid where we're doing. Um, and the policy also outlines like when it's under the threshold of bidding. Can, can we add a stipulation that like those lower item purchases are also, because they're within the discretion, not of us, most of them are, are your discretion, Mary Ann. We could say that those are local vendors will be favored guaranteed.
So do we need to amend the amendment?
I think you just need to amend it once and, and just make it applicable award.
Is it a friendly amendment, like, is it friendly, is that okay?
When applicable, award to local vendors in procurement.
Right.
And just in general.
Right, as a point.
Roll call.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Meadville, Pennsylvania authorizing the mayor and city manager to execute the city of Meadville procurement policy. McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Public comment on non-agenda items?
Yes.
I have, uh, Ms. Angela Edwards. Um, so Angela, you can sit, you can stand.
Or you can stand at the podium if you need.
Yeah, which I, like, I'm sorry.
I think I'm comfortable right here. But I just wanted to address to you all, yesterday morning, my aunt Joyce, she lives on Center. She lives on Walnut, but the alley behind is Center and right there behind Juniper. And it's real dark right there. She got hit by a car yesterday morning. It was around five AM-ish, maybe a little before five AM. She was waiting on her other sister to pick her up for work. They work at Embassy. And the, from what I got from the police report, when I went to the hospital, the police, um, the female cop was telling me the young lady was driving real fast, chasing her boyfriend. My aunt had them all black, of course, and it's four apartments in where she lives. And the young lady was zooming and didn't see my aunt. And of course, the garbage trucks was going too, thank God. They didn't hit her or she wouldn't be here. She did survive. She has broken ribs, fractured face, and swollen face and just excruciating pain. They released her yesterday. I rode by there and her grandson was living beside her. He just had moved to Hillcrest. He the one notified me that there was no light. He the one noticed on me that there was no lights. So I rode past her again, saw that there was no lights, right there on Center Center Street. Right there in our road, like, you know, where Grove Street is, all the way down in the alley to look for myself today. There are no lights. It is pitch black at that time in the morning. So I just wanted to address that on Murphy House because she couldn't be here today. And she said it was okay for me to come here and speak on this. So I'm not sure if anything can be done or not, so and it is, she said she can't even see people when they're walking at that time in the morning because they go to work at that time in the morning. She can't see the individuals walking until they get close upon her. So I just wanted to address that to you all. Thank you.
Uh, Angela, thanks for coming and bringing this up. Um, when you say there are no lights, are there no working lights or there's just no street?
No lights, period.
No lights installed.
Period, period.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela, for bringing that to us. Right, because we don't know until somebody brings us, and I swear I've walked down that alley a million times in my lifetime and never noticed, right? But uh it's really unfortunate that your aunt was was harmed and that she's going to have to go through that recovery. And that means, right, no working, no, right, uh, so um yeah, I'm really sorry that happened, but thank you for bringing that to us so that we at least know that there is, uh, there is an issue there.
Thank you.
And we have John Hartnett.
Hi. Thank you. Uh, I just was coming to note kind of my concern with the the Crime Watch website. I think it's a beautiful thing to have increased police transparency and typically you just would see the offenses and it it seems like whoever's responsible for that is uh adding some more narrative to it. Seems to me to be A I generated. And one of them, they referencing some use in our community. Uh, it says, "The decision made by three local teenagers will forever change the trajectory of their lives." I don't know what that means. There's also very cute um taglines um before all of these incidences. Such as, "No Happy Meal for you for an indecent exposure at Wendy's." Uh, "Lost and Found," I don't know what that's about, "The Beaten Path." It's not self-defense. And although the website, you know, very clearly says that people are presumed innocent until proven guilty. The statement seemed kind of prejudicial, kind of stigmatizing, uh, doesn't, you know, it's, these narratives are um becoming, I think, of something published by the city. Uh, there are instances in other communities where lawsuits have been opened uh by the use of A I uh in police reporting and um I don't know, one that I found particularly offensive, uh, an individual I was helping, the mayor held space for him at Sam. The tagline is "Saw this coming." And uh, you know, it's a story of a mentally ill individual that was trespassed. And it it says, you know, his, 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 as he's trespassed around the community, his circle of travel is limited and, you know, I mean, it's just these folks that are getting involved with our criminal justice system, nobody wants to be involved with it. They're typically going through some kind of hardship and I just would hate hate the city to contribute to any pain and suffering. So thanks for letting me share.
Thanks, John, for bringing that to our attention. We appreciate that. I'm sure we'll look into who writes those blurbs. I I don't know who writes them. But I, again, thank you, and you're right, nobody, no, I know. I don't have time for that. I uh I agree, nobody needs more hurdles, right? Nobody needs um uh that that um being placed on them. So thank you for bringing that to our attention so that we can look at that also.
Yeah, my concern is that people may take it as that's the sentiment of.
Of the sin, yeah, and I think that's what John is bringing up, right? Yeah. Okay, we'll go to council member statements. Jim?
Welcome back, Larry.
Gotcha.
Well, I just want to thank Pat Wiley, Jim Aldridge, and Ryan Carlson for their service and just thank you so much. But those are beautiful resolutions and I think they're true. And also thank you, Angela and John. Those are two things that like those are things that I think that could really easily be fixed, make a huge difference in terms of pain and suffering and, you know, lessening that in our community. So thank you, and what a beautiful day.
It was a beautiful day. And Daniel, you moved. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry again.
We never know.
Our council member statements are going to constantly start with. Sorry, Daniel, do you, um, uh, please, if you have.
Every meeting, I should just start shaking chairs around and just keep going.
Just see if I notice you.
I see we're in retirement season. It uh it is a shame to see so many good people of our community leaving, but it's uh it's a good sign. They're moving on to another great part of their life. It is. And I want to thank both Angela and John. I hope that those are both things that can be addressed soon, and I agree, the website statements are very unbecoming for the city. And it is a shame not having streetlights there. I I agree with both of you.
Thanks, Daniel. Larry.
Yeah, I um like to congratulate and thank you guys that are retiring. And also, Angela, um, we need more people in the community. I I travel that area all the time. Uh, but I was born and raised here, so that has never been uh something that I've been aware of or noticed. And that's one of the things that we need, people in the community that see something that's not right or needs fixed, to bring it to our our attention, because that's what we're about. That's what we're here for. Um, is to make this a safer community. And I'd like to wish a speedy recovery to your aunt. And hope everything's okay. And I'd just like to say I'm glad to be back. I missed uh being here. I missed you guys. And it's, again, it's a good feeling to work with a bunch of people that are concerned and care and show it, not just, you just don't hear it, you know? You know, I've got, I've had phone calls, things of that nature. It it's a good feeling. I'd like to thank everyone.
Thanks, Larry. It's good to have you back. Uh, welcome back, Larry.
Yeah, yeah, no, I reiterate the thanks that's been expressed. Thanks, Angela. Thanks, John, for coming and and sharing. Um, I think sometimes there's like, there's just, there's so much that the city covers. It's so you know, it's so easy if it's a street you don't walk down or a site you're not looking at, right? Like, there's just so much going on. So it it truly is like, you know, it's, it takes all of us, and I'm really grateful that that you came to um to um yeah, share ways in which like we can improve on what we're doing here in the city. Yeah, uh, spent two and a half hours staying with Peter, turning all the transportation plan. And 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 like ways in which we want to make our city safer for people to get around and, I mean, even just waiting for a ride, like, I mean, that's, 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 that's really hurts my heart to hear that just that, you know, was was dangerous and so. Hoping that we can just put in a request with Penn, I don't know what the process is to get new streetlights, but we pay for the electric on them, so we should request where they go. I don't know. Whatever that process looks like. Um, and hopefully, hopefully we can look into the crime watch. Like protocol to, you know, what the standards are there. I heard um from the library that I think our crisis intervention officer um will be at community coffee hour on the twenty first of of March, so I'm gonna try to go to to that. Uh, which I think is great, and hopefully a relationship can start with the library. I know they've been feeling a lot of um stress uh with, you know, uh, kind of playing host to a lot of folks in crisis, and so it would be nice if we could somehow um provide some support there.
Do you have time, Angela?
Uh, coffee hours are ten, every Friday? Ten AM. Ten AM, coffee hour, library. Did you say happy? Not, not to be confused. This Friday is first Friday in downtown Meadville. Go Green. I believe it is a uh golf scramble or something, whatever the golf words are, and anyway, like I think each storefront hosts like a different little course. It's gonna, it seems like it'll be a lot of fun. Uh, it's free to to do that, um, and Nix Putt or whatever or something sponsored it and gave all the equipment, which is, uh, so that'll be a lot of fun. First Fridays or Friday at five PM, shops stay open late. And it's something with parking at one point in terms of first Friday.
We stopped at five, at five now. We stopped at five thirty, and we did that at five so that we didn't have that half hour, weird half hour.
Yeah, not to drag your comments up, but did you do the M C R C?
I did. I did the placemaking workshop, Community Revitalization Corporation. Mary Ann was there and Peter was there. Folks from beautification committee, planning commission, shade tree commission, um, and M C R C's uh placemaking committee. Also Mike was there too. So yeah, it was covered in the paper. We got to walk around the town and kind of like look at districts of our of our downtown with new eyes. Thinking about ways we can make them more kind of like inviting spaces, safer spaces, places people want to be. I got to think a lot about the downtown. And water street. Did you have any questions?
No, I was just wondering, because I wanted, I was, I wasn't invited. No, I just, I wanted to know just what.
I don't know why I was, but anyway, I went, but um, but the night prior, the night prior had been a um a public session too. Um, so hopefully people made it out to that. I thought it was, it was great. Um, Phil Myrick is who came and and did it and has connections with Steve Davies from Project Republic Spaces who's got localized, so uh it was um uh hopefully it'll guide, uh, it sounds like coming out of that, that the M C R C, the Meadville Community Revitalization Corporation's placemaking committee will keep the conversation going and coordination going. We do have a study session next week, so I won't say it now. But mark your calendar for the parade. We do have St. Patrick's Day parade on the fifteenth. Downtown Meadville at noon. And the last thing I will say is that the Meadville Area Recreation Complex, Community Garden, spots are available. Uh, you can rent a four by eight plot for the season. Uh, suggested fee is thirty five dollars, but it's sliding scale, so folks can grow their own food. Um, and you can rent more than one if you'd like. Uh, you can call the mark or stop in to rent your spot for the season. Thanks, that's it.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
I also want to congratulate um Pat Wiley, uh, Jim Aldridge, and Ryan Carlson. Um, I'm just really super honored to um have gotten to have a relationship with these guys and and because they cared so much about our community, right? And uh they're, they uh really are an example of service and uh, you know, bravery and and courage and putting themselves on the line for um the City of Meadville and the people who live here. So I'm I'm just really honored to know them all. I want to congratulate our uh, the City of Meadville, the Police F O P uh ninety seven and the F C C A who helped uh with um the victims of the E B T fraud case, right? Um, they did a wonderful job and it was um it was just, uh, again, an example of how good Meadville can be when we come together and um and we remember that we're all in the same place, right? And uh we want to serve each other because we care about each other, right? I want to uh thank Angela and John for for bringing issues to us, right? Because again, you don't know unless you tell us, and um, you know, we we want to make this place safe and and take down as many hurdles as we can for people, um, because, you know, people are human. Mistakes get made and and life is not easy. But it is a whole lot easier when you know, right? Like that your community cares about you, that someone cares about you, as as Larry said, right? It's nice to know when people care about you and it makes life just a little bit easier, and that's kind of what we're trying to do here in Meadville, right? We're trying to make sure that everyone feels uh cared for, uh, because we do care about our neighbors. We do have an event this Saturday coming up at one thirty, right? The March installation of the eighteen twenty five celebration, uh, and it will be the Genealogy of Sorts. Presentation by Dr. Dixon and uh Clotilde.
Anderson.
Anderson, thank you. Uh, will be presenting also, she is like the keeper of Black history. Man, she's got like a a library in herself. So that is uh kind of amazing. And so one thirty, we'll be able to, what what church is that? Is that it? Do you, or is it at the?
Stone, United Methodist.
Stone, okay, right down here, okay. Uh, Stone. Uh, so I encourage everybody to go to that. It it really um it really is a cool thing to be able to celebrate, you know, with the eighteen uh twenty five celebrations and to support people who are making uh history accessible for everyone, for generations. And uh I want to uh thank Mary Ann for always listening and 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 when that the issue with the library came up. I, we talked and um, not the issue, the, you know, ongoing talks and 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 making it comfortable for everybody and make sure everybody has support and service. Mary Ann was so happy to uh talk to the crisis um um officer and and see where he can fit in and in helping in any way, right? And at being support, um, and making sure, again, everyone feels comfortable and supported and loved here in in this town. So with that, I think, I think I got everything. I think I and again, I'm just really honored to be here, uh, and get to be in this city with everybody that I care about. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, to executive session.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
What's your executive session for?
Litigation and personnel.
I tell you what, our our uh our newspaper gets pushy here, right? I'm kidding, Mike. I got, I got all kinds of good things said about you the other day uh in a, in a, in a call, so it was awesome with other people, you know, not from here. Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogels.
Take a lot.
I do.
Kinder.
Aye.